All right, we are good to go. So instructions in the case of emergency, head out either door, you can go left or go right. Um additions to leases or changes in order of the agenda?
No, I did find that um I'm gonna be crossing between five and six today, so just bear with me, they really tie in nicely.
Okay. Open to the public for items not related to the agenda. Liam, do you have anything for us? Anybody, do we have anybody online? Like we do. Nope, all right. Oh, we do, okay. Okay.
But any comments?
Anything from any online, anybody online on items not related to the agenda? Right, hearing nothing, we'll move on to number four announcements and staff report, any commissioner announcements?
I do. The charter committee meets tomorrow at four o'clock. And on the agenda is discussion of, um, let's see what we call it. A proposal from the city council and the planning commission. That came as quite a surprise to me, is that something everybody else knows except me?
I don't know. I believe.
It came up, um, it came up in the summer.
Came up where?
Where, well, when I was applying, uh, when I presented my application for um reappointment. It came up then.
Okay.
So uh, and I guess it requires charter change and community vote for it to happen. I didn't bring the topic up. It was brought up by a member of the city council as something that passed statewide that enabled that to happen.
Yeah, something, that's why I wrote to Jess, uh, to Jesse. And that's what she said, there's uh, there's been legislative change to encourage more citizens to be involved in, for example, planning of the city. So not unique to us. But um, you know, I hadn't heard about it before, so that was kind of a shocker. So I don't know what will happen with it, I, I know the charter committee, from my point of view, is a little slow getting started. We really haven't had a substantive meeting yet, we've met, I think maybe tomorrow might be the third or fourth time. So I'm looking forward to us getting started. The, the representative, one of the two representatives from the, from, uh, from the schools, left and resigned, they, uh, from the uh, school board. And um, the school, um, the school board chair is replacing her. And so that'll be a first, uh, first meeting for her. Uh, tomorrow afternoon. The other representative is the student representative to the uh, to the school board. So I assume that the school board is involved because whatever we do in terms of expanding the city council, they might wanna mirror, as they do now, uh, and expanding the school board too, so we'll see, I guess it'll get started tomorrow, we'll see what happens.
Ted? I, you know, I would certainly support adding a couple more people, cuz I think then that would allow us to do, to break up into subcommittees. And be able to, cuz right now we're sort of legislate from here as opposed to getting together as committees and bringing forth ideas. As for the school board, it seems like they have difficulty even getting people to run, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway.
I, I just questioned you, Paul, how, how does that work for you guys? You, you take that request and digest it and then come back with a recommendation to the?
Yeah, right, well, there's, I think, I think this is the fourth thing that we've, uh, for us to look at and then return to the council with a proposal. One is the, the charter is, uh, is not gender neutral, so. You know, to rewrite the charter so that it's gender, gen. Um, and then, of course, we're looking at expanding the city council, uh, perhaps having wards or districts, I guess would be a better, for us, um, so that uh, could be more people in the council and it'll be um, people represented. We've got um, five people in the council, four of whom, you know, live within a mile of each other in the southeast quadrant, you know, so. Uh, it's, that's a problem, and also the cost of running a citywide election is getting way out of hand in terms of, you know, fifteen thousand dollars to, for the losing cause or something like that, it's really kind of nuts, so. It would be, um, from my point of view, it'd be, be a really huge step forward for the city. And then the other issue to look at is, um, do we wanna have a mayor of any kind, or a strong mayor or a weak mayor? So we can have a weak mayor who, city council meetings, but had no more power than any other city councillor. Uh, and the power would continue to reside in the, um, in the city manager. Or we could have a mayor like Burlington does, where he's actually administers government plans.
I plan to, I plan to attend, but as a member of the public, and I'll be asking some questions that, um, about things in the charter that are not related to any of this. You can't hear me?
No.
Oh, I'll be attending the meeting as a member of the public, and I'll be asking um, for some considerations that are not um, either, any of those. So, but I don't need to get into them here, cuz it's a.
Yeah.
It's good stuff.
Well, this is a group that needs to get to work, that's for sure.
Paul, any announcements from?
You know, I'm sorry, I did have one announcement, I attended the um, eighty-nine Bike Ped Bridge um, design meeting. Feels like forever ago now, but um, really cool designs, um, and there were a lot of people in attendance. People put in their comments about uh, the, basically three different design directions. My comments related to a combination of two of them. So I think there's going to be one more public hearing or meeting where the public's invited to look at what they do with these comments to come and work towards a final design. So that's really exciting, the main architect was very impressive, and it was really cool talking to her after. Um, I also followed up with a um, ask that they, and just forward thinking, that they ensure that we use some kind of solar powered heated pavers on the bridge. Um, and that are perhaps um, powered by their own solar panels uh, to minimize maintenance and make a welcoming winter environment for both pedestrians and bikers, so um, hopefully they consider that, cuz I think that would really be a good thing, there's so many university students can cross, especially with the news of um, the UVM apartments, I guess being part of whatever's happening in the
City Center.
City center, so hurrah.
Duncan, I can give a report on the climate task force.
I'm sorry?
I can give a report on the climate task force.
Um, yeah, if you want to.
So, yeah, we, we finalized the draft plan, we intend to present it to the council on the nineteenth. Um, also on the nineteenth is a public hearing on the carbon-free new construction ordinance that the task force recommended. And I'm hoping at some point we'll also get in front of the committee on a potential, of the council on a potential charter change that the task force is considering.
Great. Paul?
Uh, I don't think I've got anything other than what I already wrote in, so we're good.
Okay. On to number five, discuss possible amendment to land development regulations enabling green businesses or modifying auto sales applicable for Sheldon Road corridor. I guess their staff, everyone certainly read the memo staff sent out, um, it looks like we have a couple options there, and then also have the option of not doing anything. Um, but I guess I'd like to, let's hear what commissioners have to say, what the opinions are. Someone wants to start us off?
I guess I have, I guess I have more of a couple of questions. One is, is that does the green have to be one hundred percent green, and I guess my question would be, uh, let's say Ford Motor Company was, was coming in and doing what Tesla wants to do, but maybe five percent of their sales are only EV? Would they qualify as green, or does it have to be one hundred percent green? Cuz what, what percentage constitutes a green auto dealer?
Um, I, I think from my perspective, we would need to be able to assess any use for what it is at the time that they apply for us, to us, and be one hundred percent clear as to what they are, so I think anything that is less than one hundred that might sell something else is challenging, and I would say that's an auto dealer. Um, because we're not gonna be able to ever monitor whether they're selling ninety-five percent, eighty percent, twenty percent, five percent of a kind of vehicle that's not within our scope, and in a worst case, let's say we did approve something that said that they were ninety-five percent. And then the next year they only sold five percent EVs, we're not likely to be able to be saying, well, take, take a hike. So I think that any that is not, we are at the time of application as to exactly what they are, is challenged.
Okay.
To Ted's um, question though, I guess, I'm looking at Liam's draft, if that's what the question went to, it says a, a business enterprise engaged in like blah, 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 which doesn't, doesn't say solely or principally or substantially, so engaged is maybe a little ambiguous as to how much engagement, so um, you know, I would suggest mostly, or it's some word like that, um.
Significant.
Primarily, maybe.
I, I guess my, my issue is, um, and I had this conversation with Paul earlier, in terms of the term green business, we, we don't, we haven't really defined that in our regs anywhere, and I, I think that um, until we have a pretty concrete definition of what that is, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to, I, I, I guess it goes back to, you know, do, would I prefer option one or option two? I, I, I'm leaning towards option two. Um, I think that's probably a question for all of us here. To me, option one has a lot of loose ends, a lot of unintended consequences that could happen. Option two, if, if we wanna go forward, seems like a cleaner way to do this. I don't disagree with the green business, but I, I don't think we have that defined well enough, you know, what, what is a green business? I could say, my, my store is a green business.
Is it defined here? I mean, you're saying you don't agree with the, or you think the definition needs work?
I think it needs work to be established in our, our regs, I don't think it's established enough, that's my concern.
So I have a comment, um, I'd like to understand, let me make sure I'm reading Paul's maps, um, correctly for map two and, and one. And this is where this kind of goes back and forth to me, I feel like the Climate Action Task Force could really help us out here, you know? As I look at two and what I sent over to Paul, just to kind of share my thoughts. I, I look at Shelburne Road as like, what is it gonna be, a walkable, livable community or a street full of parking lots that sells cars, cuz it, it feels like we're trying to make two things happen here, and it's just, the whole row is confusing to me, so. Or doesn't seem to conflict, however, um, I like Paul's comment back that what they try, what he tried to do, what they tried to do in uh, map two was, you know, shift some of the auto um, use off of the areas where we want to see more residential growth, and I think that, that's an interesting idea, I mean, I think this whole area can be considered, and particularly just looking at the red versus the purple there, if that's, you know. So in addition to that, um, I did have a thought even about, um, the brand that came to us is a fully electric company, but we don't spot zone and try, we're not brand specific. But I thought, I said, even I contacted um, them, Liam, with a question, um, which was simply, you know, the product is green, but um, right across at, at the border of Orchard School is a long time, decades old repair facility behind, you know, as part of another dealership. It paints cars, it spews, I mean, you stand in that Orchard parking lot and you are breathing in like, it's like you're standing behind a, a gas car, it, it's just awful, and it's been there for decades, and I never understood how that could be bordered up with an elementary school playground. So my, my point is, even, even this new brand will be painting cars, most likely within their facility. And the response I got was great, and it was that, well, actually, they have a very strict um, health and safety policy that does deal with such issues, they have a very, they put a lot of emphasis on ensuring that such things like fumes are maintained with a high level of this internal system and blah, blah, blah. So I'm thinking more in terms of a map two with not so much, is it a green business or not, but just if you're in the red area and you wanna be in auto, you've gotta meet some really strict responsibility codes, and I don't know how we can do that, but um, you know, I would like to see you know, anything backing onto a school, not be able to spill out pains, they should follow the same strict um, exhaust process that requires that they do it inside with this, whatever the system is. So I guess my, my, my comment is that I agree with Duncan, that map two gives us a little bit more, um, it, I like map two because it separates what we are hoping to be more of a residential walkable area from an area that's just gonna continue to be more auto. And instead of just saying, oh, green businesses get to, I would like to see anything in that red zone, any business has to have very strict environmental code that is acceptable and dignified to be bordering a neighborhood in a school. So it's broader than just a type of business. It becomes less of a concern to me what it's selling, it matters most that it is safe around the area where we're going to be building more homes.
You, you wanna see more stringent uh, safety guidelines than C one auto, anything that's zone C one auto?
Anything in red, anything in this red area here, because it's backed on to the neighborhoods, and if that includes auto, anything that goes in there should have to live up to a higher standard of um, environmental and toxicity concerns than the purple area. I'd be, ideally, they all have to, but that, that gets us out of having to have this discussion about, I mean, cuz any, any auto should be, at this point, will be coming in saying, oh, well, we are also green, cuz we sell two percent, and, and, you know, it would be fantastic if Vermont just adopts California's plan and says by twenty thirty, it all has to be, and that takes some of the onus off of us. But I think going forward, some, a car is always gonna have to be painted, and I'd really like to see any car being painted in this red area, have to have very stringent code to not release toxic fumes.
We, could we uh, expand the map? I'm trying to get a bead exactly.
So yes and no, yes, um, but I can't get it on that screen, I just can't seem to get it on that screen tonight.
Okay, this screen.
Or that screen. I can get it on my screen, and I might be able to hack it so that I can show it on this, on the screen just by a cord here, but.
Well, maybe you could, um, so in map, in map two, the two little dots.
It was in the packet that was sent.
Public document.
I sent it to you yesterday, Liam.
If you scroll down, you should, if you scroll down, it should come to.
If you would like, I can spend a few more minutes and see if I can get things working.
Well, we can also just tell you the page.
I, I think it would make sense to go through it honestly, online and share it.
We can, uh, that's cuz you didn't bring your computer.
I gave it to my son, he went to Wisconsin.
But we can tell you what page it's on, in the meantime. What page is that?
Page two.
Page, well, page two of that piece, but like, of the whole packet.
It's page four of the whole packet, or five of the whole packet. Did, uh, not to further complicate, but did everyone see Michael's email? Yeah. He, he, he was, uh, proponent of simplifying everything and consolidating all of the C one, R fifteen, C one auto and C two into one zone. I think there's, that's a little heavier lift at this point.
I think it would be good to, to go through in some detail what is permitted in each of these areas, cuz it is pretty complicated, and I, I'm not sure.
As, as I understand it, as Paul explained it to me this morning, C one, R fifteen and C one auto are the same with exception that C one auto allows auto. Right. So th- those are almost the same, auto is the one you, no, that, that's the red in this map, and that's, that auto is the one use that's not allowed in C one, R fifteen, but is allowed in C one auto. The difference between C one, R fifteen, C one auto and C two, C two has a lower density, C two is seven residential acres per unit versus fifteen in C one and C one auto, so there, that's a big difference.
And that's what the, uh, and that's where we assign some TDR density.
Yes.
Yes, I have a mind map, I do have red, but I have basically brown.
I, I think that's, that's, that is C one auto is the brown.
Okay.
In, inside the blue line, C one auto.
And this is where, and it, you know, it's, it's unfortunate, because this is such a great opportunity, and it'd be really great to find a fast solution. At the same time, we're talking about doing, accomplishing so much in this area. And there couldn't, in my mind, there can't be two more opposite things happening there, many, many, many auto, adding more and walkable community with parks and, you know, residences where people wanna live forever, so it really seems.
I mean.
So I could tell you, my perspective on it is that we should do everything possible to move this as quickly as possible, and to me, it seemed like a no-brainer killing two birds with one stone to reuse that existing building for this purpose, and that's why I really liked option one, instead of having to have to deal with all this rezoning, but option one was brilliant, elegant way to, you know, have this business move in really quickly, in a really efficient way.
My, my concern is that we're not, we're not dialed in on what a green business is, and we, and we.
Look, we could, we, we. Play with that definition over time, if we need to, we can play with it now.
I, I get that, but I also think that we're, we're, we're opening ourselves up to a number of unintended consequences with option one that I don't see with option two. Um, I, I, I agree, I would like to see this happen as well, I just, in my mind, option two is the cleaner way to do it. I think that we need to go back and look at a green business and really define that, because it's a category that we're.
Option two really quickly, I would completely support that as well, I just think, given the, the timeline that Liam's laid out, and the real benefit to this community of getting this business in town, we should move really quickly.
But every decision we make, we really need to think long-term about how it impacts everything. Well, then there's unintended consequences, which we had a member of this, you know.
Think them through.
Hold on, go ahead, Paul.
That's a catchy phrase, but what are the unintended consequences?
Right? How can we discuss that right now?
The biggest one for me is that when you say green business, we haven't really defined that in our regs, and if we.
So help us define it.
Well, he hasn't defined it.
I think we're putting the cart in front of the horse there.
Liam's defined um, something very precise, he says, um, alternative energy, such as solar, wind, geothermal, electric vehicles. So that's, that's the definition he's using, which seems to me, honestly, if we can attract those kind of businesses to town, that's a huge win.
I don't disagree.
We also acknowledge that just this week, there was in the news, uh, multiple, multiple, now we're loving data, right? Want them to succeed, but they have had multiple incidences, which will just happen, cuz that's the nature of the business, where the lithium batteries caught fire, cuz we all know that that can happen. And that's like all, you know, those are things that we, that, that's an unintended consequence, if we pack up, wha- what guardrails are there? You know, we haven't had to say, oh, well, if you're, if you're a green business and you might have lithium batteries that might have more fire concerns, then we need to think about how close can that really be to other things, there's no, that's, there is no LDR for that right now, right? So, or maybe, maybe there is an away, but, but we have to be more, more thoughtful of the, of, of those kind of issues, and.
I don't know, I think that's pretty isolated, but okay.
So Paul has it up on, on the screen, so.
Apparently, if all else fails, hit reset. So I have to pack it now up on the screen, and would you like me to go backwards a little bit to talk about what's in the options, or do you wanna?
I think we're.
I think we're okay with what's in the options, um, Ted had a question.
I said a quick question, on option, you know, map two, the two dots, what is that dealership there?
The two dots that are yellow?
Yes.
That is Audi and.
Okay, sure.
Up and, up in the, up in the sort of middle of it, in the, yeah, that is Audi and, um, no.
No, that's Nissan, it's the Nissan dealership.
That's Nissan and the one behind Nissan.
The highest on the left.
Like across from.
VW and the Nissan, and then the, what's the new one that, that seems to be a multi?
Yes, that's Nissan up there.
And the building in question is that close, I didn't realize it was that close, is it, to the left?
Yes, so that's just immediately north of the two yellow dots is the cemetery. After that is the Olive Garden.
Right.
And then behind the Olive Garden is a vacant parcel Lowe's, and then the parcel in question is right next to that.
Okay.
Whoops, that's a long script. Um, Liam, you've had your hand up for a while, so if you wanna give us some.
So I just wanna provide a, a little background, this week, we came to the city of Maine, and I, too many people, Paul started then, uh, you know, what would the city like to see that it would allow this new strip code? And um, the story is that, you know, the city plan wasn't, it was just explaining the auto zone. So I provided three options for the city to see, and at the last hearing or meeting that we had, there seemed to be some expression of interest in adaptive reuse, well, when I originally drafted it, it's a very narrow amendment, only applies to a building that has been vacant for twenty-four months. And that's located in the commercial zone, an industrial zone, so we're very few, the unintended consequences are very limited, because it's, you're ending your very few buildings that it qualifies as being upgraded or perfected within the period of time. At that last thing, uh, meeting, there was a suggestion, maybe instead of just having it for any use, that it be limited to certain, on terms of usage of the network, and which kind of, certainly, you know, the thought about applying the words primarily or solely principally, you know, if used, it may make sense, but, but it is a very narrow amendment, now. We're particular, you know, we're satisfied with, uh, the, you know, this option of, if you wanna expand the zone, but that was a different direction than we originally told as an, as an, as an option, but that was the original option that we gave you. The key here, the, the problems we have is, is, is the, the timing of the statute. If tonight you decide that you do wanna draft an amendment, and that comes back for next hearing with next year, you're pushing the next year because of the fifteen day warning requirement, even if they have a late hearing that we're going to have a, an amendment warning. That pushes it to the end of October, to October twenty-seventh, according to the time to hear him, because of this fifteen day problem, and then if at that point, then if you go down to that night, where it goes to the city council and where, you know, in the December and in the holidays, and, you know, it just, it just pushes it out, you certainly, uh, can approach this in many different ways. But, but I had thought that, uh, the direction of this, that I, I thought I had some feedback, but to do it in the most narrow way with the least amount of potential impacts, and the, uh, this only applies to, as drafted, only to vacant buildings that were vacant for twenty-four months, except, not really used to, they just found out, like, for a month, they're gonna lose this, probably before, uh, Halloween, right, and that, um, it's a William of the March District, and then most importantly, you had a filing permission, and you are providing a guideline, those are for a new use. you had a filing permission and you are providing a guideline that simply for a new use that's allowed on ignore this. This still has to go through the R B and going through additional use approval, which looks at character of the the effect on the neighborhood. That that is where many of these issues would come off is that would be specific issues is in that use. Um, and it also has to go through site planning. So it isn't, you're not providing a blank check here. Uh, if you perceive an event, you're just saying you're authorizing, you know, when you board, you just allow consideration on one simple new use. Um, and they would uh, have to be uh, promoting uh, you know, an alternative energy product and whether that's exclusive, primary, principal, you know, that work in the end. But uh, it it what what you know, what Tesla really wants to do is is move this along because otherwise, you know, unfortunately, and 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 I, you know, I don't need to quote on this, but they really are, when we go looking elsewhere, it's that's and that would be a unfortunate thing. Because, you know, I can't think of a better site than this site. It's empty. They're not going to rebuild any parking lot. They're not going, they're going to use an existing building and the zoning that is proposed could only apply for a handful of the entire uh, city. So.
Um, I believe we have someone online who would like to speak. Eves, if you would like to pop on. Eves, can you hear us?
Have a question while you think so that. Um, can other people hear us?
I'm I'm here.
Oh, there you are.
I was trying to unmute. I apologize. I'm on my cell phone.
The Liam is very faint. I, we can hear the commission. This is Kevin Auerbach from Tesla, but Liam is very faint.
Hitting the green.
Uh, that's because I have not turned on the microphone.
We, uh, I'm sorry, Eves, were were you able to speak?
I am. Can you hear me all right?
Uh, if you can turn your volume up, that would be great. But yeah, we we can hear you.
All right. Um, I'll I'll try to speak in a strong voice. So all I would say is that, you know, there's a couple of things to be aware of. And and for those of you who don't know me, I'm a commercial real estate broker and I'm Hannaford's broker. And so I'm in the middle of this transaction. And what I'll say is that it's, in my humble opinion and and in my business, Tesla is a company that has immense resources, as we all know. Uh, you know, Elon Musk is buying Twitter. So the idea of them finding a piece of land and just building a brand new dealership is certainly not out of the question, nor is it not within the realm of possibility. And myself and their broker have done, I think, a very good job of convincing them that they would be far better off in this community and in this market and in this state doing an adaptive reuse on existing facility, because that's the greatest form of of of, you know, going green that we can think of. And the unfortunate reality is that that Hannaford's box, the way that it sits, it's made to be a grocery store. And if it's not going to be a grocery store, it's going to end up being a discount store of some form or another that frankly will will not do a whole lot for anybody. And I've been trying to do business on the vacant land that Hannaford's has had for sale or for lease to build for close to twenty years, twenty years. And I've had a few people kicking the tires of the largest lot, the one behind People's United for a hotel, but other than that, people are simply not interested. And what I honestly believe is that turning the lights back on in that facility with a use like this one is going to stimulate people to want to locate in close proximity to them. And what that means is the opportunity to build housing above retail, to do things like the the people who bought the university mall are doing, to really create a community there. But without that box being activated and lit back up, it's just an empty field with a big box in it. And and, uh, you know, I I'm you know, you 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 do business the way that you please. But for me, you know, I've been trying to find a tenant for this thing for two years and 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 I feel as though we've we've hit the lottery with this one. And I do appreciate, you know, all the concerns around the green business and making sure that there's, you know, very low V O Cs. That's what Tesla's all about. And so what I would love to do is see how if this could happen and this becomes a catalyst for other businesses of that type who want to appeal to the type of people who want a Tesla, who want an electric car, who want things to be green. Well, maybe that becomes the destination for those types of businesses. So I'd encourage you to see it for what it is, which is, you know, it's just, it it's such an opportunity. And the problem realistically, the old saying in my business is time kills deals. And so a company like Tesla will try here, but if they feel as though it's not going to happen, they'll look elsewhere. And it would be very easy for them, unfortunately, to go to Williston and build, you know, some monstrosity across from Berlin City. But I would hate that because this is such a great plan. The only thing that that store is really good for is a grocery store. And the problem is that Hannaford's will never allow ever. They'd rather just sit on it empty. And as an empty store, it's just, you know, it it it's it's an eyesore. And it's a magnet for things that really, you know, you don't want to occur. So uh, you know, I I I look forward to working with you through the process, but I I really want to be um, a a proponent of of you seeing sort of the 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 landscape from where I sit. Um, because this is kind of a coup to get them to do this. And and I understand it's a challenge. I'm on the Burlington Planning Commission. I'm actually missing our meeting tonight to be on this meeting. But this is really important. And I think it, you know, for them to want to be in Vermont in the first place and then to want to be, you know, right here is is I, in my opinion, fantastic. So that's all.
Thank you, Eve. Go ahead, Ted.
Um, I I'm not sure if I misheard, but the the last speaker suggested that a car dealership would be good for the neighborhood. Um, I didn't quite understand that, but anyway, I'll let that pass. Um, I guess I, Liam, I had a question. Um, tell me how this is a benefit to South Burlington, not the state or not the world, but South Burlington in particular. And I and I you know, continue that with what kind of revenue does?
And obviously it will reactivate a the current vacant site that I'm doing currently at twenty twenty, obviously, that's probably that's where it would be very but more importantly, I think, and there are just a few online, is that it's going to hire a substantial number of very important jobs for the people. That is people who will be able to um, maintain and repair um, electric vehicles. Um, and Tesla will come in, it will help uh, employ these people, train them and and create a workforce that has a critical workforce, ethical for open number of uh, electric vehicles. And those are going to be very uh, good quality jobs for uh, people who uh, have technical skills, not necessarily college graduates, but people who are coming out of high schools and coming out of technical schools. Um, and I think that will be very important. In addition, it it and as we discussed is that, you know, in your uh, part of the climate action plan is to move toward more uh, uh, electric and and alternative energy products. And this will uh, by providing a local place for people to buy them and have them serviced, uh, will provide us uh, an impetus to move from the current uh, gasoline powered, diesel powered automotive to uh, those vehicles. And uh, uh, and I think that will be good for South Burlington. Um, you know, and uh, so I think I think it would be beneficial.
Does South Burlington, does do car dealerships uh, pay a sales tax?
Uh, they they uh, they they do not pay the additional sales.
Okay.
The sales and use tax for repos is the same, um, regardless of what
Oh, I see. I I guess one of my hesitations again is the building is still paying property tax. They'll pay, they will pay maybe slightly more uh, if the building is, you know, retrofitted. How much more? I don't know. And the second thing is, is that if it were retail, you would pay significantly more to the city of South Burlington because we ch- we share the revenue of the sales tax. So, you know, from my perspective, I'm trying to figure out for that neighborhood, is a car dealership any beneficial, is any benefit? Will people be swarming out of their condominiums and apartments, affordable housing apartments that are and going and purchasing a a Tesla vehicle? I don't get it.
But but will that change? If it's a dollar general, uh, I'm not sure that that will, you know, necessarily it might not be. Uh, Hannaford's will never allow it to have anything that comes with in sales of Hannaford's, which is most things. So, you know, it's it's it goes across the street. And that's why it's the length extends March of two thousand eighteen, I think. What are you?
So I have a a comment.
Sorry, go ahead.
Anything for a while. Okay. So um, so Ted, first of all, I think any tax related issue really is up to the city council though, right? I mean, could the couldn't the city council propose that to auto be? No, they can't. It's a state thing. Okay. Um, my second question really was, I I would like to understand from Paul the maps a little bit more because um, if we were talking about A verse or one versus two, um, one of them seemed to have a message of if it was if it if it is auto now, those in this area would have to know, get about, give up being auto. Like if we add it up to the north there. Was that option one that would have to, that was two? Okay, so.
So so the idea of changing the zoning boundaries is option two entirely. Option one is uh, consideration of the uh, the idea that Liam had talked about in the commission and expressed some interest in of adaptive reuse. Those are the two options. Of that, in option two, which is a map, the the left hand side of the screen is the current zoning. The right hand side of the screen would be a way of achieving the outcome that is requested of you by shifting around the the boundaries of the district. So in that instance, what would happen is you would add the Lowe's property and the vacant Hannaford's property to the C one auto district, thus enabling auto sales in that district. And my recommendation would be that you would remove everything south of um, the Nissan dealership from the C one auto, which would include the McDonald's site today, uh, the uh, the Larkin Terrace building, the site south of Larkin Terrace, and then that sort of multi-use sort of uh, uh, mix of office buildings that includes the Eagles Club. Those would all become a commercial one residential fifteen, which is the same as C one auto, except it doesn't allow auto sales. And then the last two properties to the south of that, which would be the Audi and I believe Volkswagen would, in this instance, move over to being C two, which also allows auto sales. So they would be able to continue what they are. Um, it is a different residential density in C two, which is why I was not proposing to extend it further north. But in this one property, it's already a car dealership.
So so just to be clear, I feel that the reuse opportunity or or actually what's happening in the the map two here is a very good idea. Um, I would fully support that. And I would ask simply, and in this particular case, the incoming, you know, business happens to already meet the criteria. I would ask that any in this, I guess, C two area be required to meet more stringent. You know, environmental and safety.
About C one, not C two.
No. What did you just say? Is this C one or C two?
It's red is C one.
I know, but what is this in here that you just said? You said this is, you said VW is becoming C two.
So that's the bottom of the screen, the pink.
Okay.
Uh.
So Orchard is right there.
Yep. So
And what is that? That's a vault. But that's the VW.
Mm hmm.
So VW is not, okay.
I meant uh, Audi and the other one.
Accurate.
Accurate.
Okay. All right. So whichever these are up here, all I'm asking is that if we grant this or propose this change, that along with this change, those in the C one, the district that we're talking about need to meet a more stringent environmental code. How how that's it? That's what I'm asking. And and the good news is that Tesla already does. So can we basically cut and paste Tesla's extreme uh, um, uh, healthy policy and require that the other auto industries in those zones, which are on the border of a school, do the same, even if it takes them a while to do it? I don't know what leeway we have in that. And that's where I wonder if the task for the climate action task force can pick up that conversation because maybe it's a city ordinance that would do it if it's something that an L D R cannot. So just to be clear, my, I I am comfortable with what Paul has done in map two. Um, I would ask that in addition to that, we add the more stringent code because defining what a green business is, I think, is going to be too difficult. I just want it to be safe and I don't want crap in the sky that we all have to breathe.
Okay, I I want to take a quick step back. Um, I know where Monica stands. I know where I stand. I just want to get a feeling for rest, where the rest of the commission is. Andrew, I think I
I'm I'm happy with option one or two. Again, my perspective here is we should accelerate this. Um, I'm also happy with Monica's suggestion. I would recommend we do this in stages, adopt the zoning so that Abbott can move forward while we then construct what this environmental standard would look like and pass it, you know, in the next few months. I don't think that things need to be tied together, but I would be fully supportive of working on a standard like that.
Because the new member business meets that criteria, I support that. And I do think that it's more of a probably a comp plan conversation, but one that I would hope wouldn't take until the comp plan is done to to get to. I'd really like to see if we make, if we agree to this change and if the community agrees and the city council agrees, I think we need to move more quickly than comp plan to make those changes.
Paul?
Well, I just think that the impact of having Tesla in town and having Tesla in this area of town is huge. I mean, it's like getting Microsoft in the town, you know. Um, it's, it'll, the psychological impact will be enormous for that whole area. I bet you to say it'll become city center one day.
We have one already. Um, Ted, I'm gonna
Make it short. I'll be voting no.
No.
But did Paul, did you have a preference on option one or up two?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, did you?
Not really. I I like the ends, uh, Liam's idea of having it as, you know, there are both as two spots.
Um, all right, Ted is no. Um, I I personally would favor option. I I I agree. I think it would be great to get Tesla there. I would uh, prefer option two. Um, certainly I hear what you're saying, Monica. Um, we could certainly look at that. I guess that's a question to Paul. I mean, what what do we, what are we getting into on that front? Is that are we overstepping our bounds there?
Well, I think that what Monica's idea here is somewhere between an ordinance and or what would be described in our land development regulation, performance standards. So, you know, what you were broadly talking about was a idea of zoning that is less focused on the use, more focused on the impact of these. And that's where performance standards come in. Um, we do have performance standards in our regulations. Um, my larger question around it would be if we are to adjust those or if we're to implement them more strongly in some way to some businesses there, that becomes a resourcing question of um, what is the proposed um, mechanism for um, assuring compliance? And I think that that's, that becomes a council question and a uh, and and a budgetary question of what resources do we want to deploy to do that? And so I think from my perspective, I would agree with Andrew that if your objective is to advance uh, a tool in the shorter term, that's a bigger conversation. Um, and then, yeah.
Well, can I, because the climate task force is looking to add a purse, add staff to oversee, that That is why I said in the beginning, I'm crossing between two agenda lines, but you know, it's kind of like, you know, if we do this. I really think, yes, there's a benefit and we can't spot zone. And I'm not going to talk about specific brands. It really troubles me that those kids at Orchard are breathing in that toxic. So the sooner the the climate action plan can maybe help us ensure that by changing this auto zone, we can, I'm staring at Andrew, that we can do this, that would be fantastic.
I I so the climate task force has recommended, you know, more robust kind of inspection monitoring resource in town, which would be consistent with enacting a performance standard of this type. That I think the task force life is is limited at this point, honestly, though, and it's also tasked with greenhouse gas reductions, not everything having to do with the environment. So I'm not sure this is in scope. Having said that, I, again, I'm fully supportive of us doing this as quickly as we can to come up because I completely agree with you about this school and we should not have businesses that pollute the environment. But I'm not sure it's a task force thing, but I think we can take that on and and we should.
So I I guess that that leaves us. We have two members who are not here. I believe that you said you had spoken to Jessica.
I spoke briefly with Jessica. Well, no, I did speak with her last week and she was interested in having both of these options be considered by the commission. Of the two, her description was that she was more interested in this option two of a rezoning. That said, she really liked the idea of an adaptive reuse as a tool that the city could think about for properties in all sorts of circumstances, but maybe not specifically to address this challenge. I think she was seeing that that's a tool that has a lot of power, might have a lot of more complexity to it, to make sure it's deployed correctly and doesn't have a lot of side effects.
And I believe that Michael would was when when this was subject was first broached, I believe he was in favor of it. Yes.
He was in favor of a change that would allow for this use to exist.
Okay.
I don't think we got to the point of which option. But he expressed strong support for allowing this activity to take place on this property.
So I guess the majority of us, other than Ted, feel that we should go forward with this. The question is, what avenue? Option two seems to be the primary one. If other people aren't against it.
Make a motion that we advance option two.
Before you do that, can I say one thing? So I do, I would ask, and I was going to consider making a motion that if we if we do make a motion that we do incorporate into that motion, this next step.
I was about to say it.
But I do have, I do have a second next step that I would ask, which really does seem more like a comp plan. So I understand that's a longer period of time, but back to what what map two does, which is not spot zoning, is it is strategic and it is trying to move auto out of the areas that we intend to see more residential experience. I still feel that the current building businesses, which may be there forever. I still feel that those on Shelburne Road are not a good fit for strategically what we're trying to do in this area. And I would ask that an additional part of the motion be that we reconsider whether that Shelburne Road immediate contact can continue holding its auto once any of those businesses.
Sure. So.
So whatever that was.
It's always within your authority. If you'd like, you can change zoning and prohibit a use that exists. That use is becomes a preexisting nonconformity. So let's say you an area did allow vehicle sales and then it no longer does. That particular property is allowed to maintain its its vehicle use in perpetuity. If that use, if if the user abandons that use for a period of six months, then it refers to zoning and it's no longer a nonconformity. So that is certainly something you can do. I didn't put it in here because that wasn't part of your discussion last week about changing other things, but you certainly could either. I guess I'd recommend if your if your objective is to move precipitously to not include that today because it's a conversation that probably is owed to those property owners about where you're going.
Right.
But you're certainly welcome to consider that as a future work item.
So can I make the motion? Can I? And I'll try to word that.
I I guess I would agree with Paul. I I'm not in agreement with you making the second part of that motion, just because I think it's we're biting off more than we can chew. And I think we need to have a further discussion about that.
So let me let me propose some wording for the motion, which can be declined or edited. And and Andrew just said he was cool with me making the motion.
You have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I I'm happy for Monica to make the motion.
Okay.
I didn't think he had a motion on the floor. He just said he was going to make a motion.
Okay.
So.
Add something because I think it's important to understand.
I'm going to lose my flow.
There's a lot of heavy gasoline. They don't do oil, so they must. And this is in the bodies. What what these issues that we've been talking, that that the concerns are about are not related to this use and we're just afraid that, you know, even if you go to option two, it means the earliest you're going to have a hearing on an amendment, even if Paul prepares an amendment for the next year with a report. And then notice that in the fifteen days will be at the end of October. And that that's the problem. And then if we start getting into adding performance standard issues that actually don't apply to this, then you're going to start having a whole bunch of car dealers coming in here that may be opposing that. This this use disappears. I just want to make sure you understand that if the reason that we suggested, I thought we had some guidance in the last time. That's why I prepared an amendment in the fall. You could be long for a hearing. It can, and even now, it would likely, it has to be a quick immediate warning. So it can't, it can't. Get onto the next early October here. That will be the earliest that we can get on. But if you don't move in other direction, obviously, we're not going to have that.
I I think we're we're trying to move this forward.
So my, the motion I would like to put forward is that we approve the concept of map two and move forward with processing LDR that supports that. And pursue public hearing at the earliest possible convenience time. That second we, as a secondary step, we then make a priority to discuss, including environmental improvements within this new area, the C one area on Shelburne Road and this new area, which the new already meets. And the third part is that we agree that when discussing comp plan issues related to Shelburne Road, we agree to come back to the discussion of whether some of the auto, current auto should be discontinued use after current ownership.
Do we have a second or are we gonna?
I would second the first two parts. The third is an agreement to agree to consider. Doesn't sound like much of a motion.
Well, things tend to get lost.
I I would agree with the first two parts. I would strike the second, the third part at this point.
But I'm supportive of that discussion, Monica. It just doesn't feel like a motion.
Said, when we're talking about comp plan, though, I mean, this is a three year conversation. We don't have to talk about it. It's not a priority. It's just when we get to that part of the comp plan. We can talk about.
I don't think, I don't think we need to put it in the motion. That's that's my point. I think we can have that conversation, but I don't think it needs to go in this motion.
Yes.
Can I suggest procedurally, you did get a you should either get a second and then amend the motion to move the third part or not get a second. I just want to sort of.
Can I make a second amendment?
So you can second it if you'd like to have further discussion on it. Right now, there's no further discussion on it until somebody seconds it.
Well, Andrew seconded it, right?
Well, he did with a caveat. So you need to second that motion. You can then say, I propose to amend that motion.
I second the motion and propose to amend it by striking the third part of the motion.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I would second that.
Okay, so now the only discussion is, do you strike the third part? And then vote on that. And then if you, if it's that makes sense?
So do we need to vote?
We need to vote then.
So your vote would be strike that third piece of Monica's or keep it. Yay to strike, nay to keep it.
All right, so all in favor of striking the piece? In favor of keeping? All right.
Four to one. So now you're back to the original motion, but it's only the first two.
And.
You can have discussion on that and then decide. I do just procedurally, not procedurally. You, at the next time that you meet, I can have the draft and the report for you and you can set the actual hearing date at that time. I'll work with Duncan and Monica, sorry, Duncan and Jessica to determine whether that can be in your special meeting. That's just a add on or not. And.
And Paul, that doesn't impact any other current car dealerships right now because we're not. So that's nice and clean. It's removing auto from areas that are currently in use but aren't using auto. So it's not harming anything there.
And then I guess my only other note would be on the second piece of that of considering the performance standards, just to ask you to look at it in the context of your work plan and make sure that you're not bumping out another priority. My last comment would be before you vote on this, maybe you want to see with these folks whether allowing auto in that area would be would meet their needs. Because I know that wasn't.
That that was our first suggestion and and.
Just verifying.
It's purely timing. I would, I would obviously hope that if at the next hearing, if you have the amendment and report, that you consider having a special meeting fifteen days from there so that you can, that we don't have to wait till the end of October to 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 move it to the city council. Thank you.
Okay. The motion as it stands. We will take a vote on that. All in favor of that motion? Hi? They have four, none in favor, one, none. So it passes.
Okay, so we will have an amendment drafted up for you and a report to go with it.
And hopefully we, you think we can do that quickly at our special meeting?
If you're comfortable with it, it's a joint meeting otherwise. But if you would like to spend five minutes on this item to warn a hearing, then that's certainly something you can do.
And I would just ask in terms of performance standards, I do think that's a great, if that if it can be strict enough to require things, even on current businesses. I don't know how this relates to, because I understand what you're saying about the task force being a limited, but there are some really good brains there pertaining to these issues. And if we can find a way to strike up, maybe is it a subcommittee that starts to look at that?
I think that becomes a council question because the task force was given the job of drafting the climate action plan. I think what Andrew means by time limited is once council completes their work, the task force work is complete.
I understand. So what I'm.
Their choice.
Right. So what I'm suggesting is that are, can we potentially at least maybe get a subcommittee or something together so that we don't lose this thread? Because there are other areas of the city that I think could really benefit from bringing current businesses up to a higher level of standards. That's really what I'm thinking. So.
Are you volunteering?
Sure. But, yeah, I mean.
No, well, I bet. I've got to believe the state has some pretty stringent standards on auto paint shops. I've got to believe that.
No standard that.
Well. I mean.
There may be standards that the particular business is not complying with, right? You have the EPA, there's.
Yeah, that's another issue.
It's probably not the standard about those types of emissions. And it may just be a question of enforcement. I'm not sure.
Liam, anything else?
Just one question. I heard Paul mention something about a joint meeting and I just tried to understand what that meant and what date.
Regular planning commission meeting is actually a special joint meeting with council. And so on a separate subject, what I was suggesting to the commission is if they would, as part of that same evening, like to have a brief meeting of their own in order to warn the public hearing on this, they could do that.
And what night was that?
Two weeks from tonight.
Twenty seven.
Okay, just two weeks from time. So you're regularly, what would normally be your regularly scheduled meeting? Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We are through with item five then and on to item six, comprehensive plan. Discuss themes for facilitated public discussion and primary objectives from draft climate action plan.
All right. So there's two, two subject areas that are on here. The first was you, this is a component of the public outreach that you have been talking about and you had expressed interest in to us of bringing in a professional facilitator to work with yourselves and be available to committees to have them each think through some ideas. We thought that this would be a good opportunity for commissioners to brainstorm some subject areas where you think that there could be some rich community conversation. What are the topics that you would like to see the community have some facilitated conversation on? I think that would help us to move this ball forward. The second piece, which is not really related to this, is to give you a little preview of some of the key findings from the climate action plan that will can that once received by council next week can will become a supporting plan in your effort of developing the comprehensive plan. So thinking about how these things interact and just bringing some of these key findings to you, there'll be a more formal presentation of the whole thing. But I think the sooner that we can be thinking about what some of the key findings are, the more useful for your comp plan one.
You had mentioned the version of the climate action plan that we read. There were a couple of major changes or.
I wouldn't say major changes. There were a couple of changes to some language in the section about leadership matters. There was a little bit of the task force removed a little bit of draft text in there about the the plan equivocated a little bit on natural areas versus about what should be done with natural areas. There was a statement in there of saying something like, however, balancing these issues brings forward some some additional challenges. And there were a couple of sentences struck last week. I can go through that in more detail. There was also just little things of highlighting the global consequences and making note of the importance of food systems were really the the three changes.
So I have to say, I was a little confused about what we were doing with this agenda item because I thought we were talking more about the document that was shared.
Two parts, two, two separate things to talk about. One is what are some rich areas in a facilitated conversation that you all would like to see us start to ramp up on? Topic A. Topic B, only connection is it's also the comp plan, highlighting a few of these key findings, key recommendations out of the climate action plan that provides some measurable objectives for you to consider and think about as you're putting together the comp. So two separate things, just both under the heading of comp plan.
Well, I I've got one that I talked to Paul about earlier today. Infill in R one. I know, Monica, you had mentioned, you know, eliminating R one.
Well, talking about it.
I don't know that we go that far, but you know, infill in R one is something that's we we we've sort of pushed it away for the last couple of years when we, when we've talked about, we've gone, oh, boy, I don't want, don't want to go there yet. But I think that's a conversation that as a community, we need to start to have.
And Duncan, you're saying infill in R one or infill and R one?
Infill in R one or or.
I think infill period because.
In established neighborhoods is probably a better way to put that. I I'm thinking personally of an example in my neighborhood. I live on Deerfield Road, right off Pheasant Way. My house is on the corner. There's a house on the corner across from me. The house next to that house has a huge backyard. Easily could fit a house, fit a house in there. Would I be thrilled to see that house? Probably not at this point, but you know, that's it's a conversation to be had. You know, and it doesn't necessarily have to be R one, but infill in established neighborhoods, I think, is something that needs to be broached.
So, you know, kind of consistent with that in general, infill redevelopment of the downtown, the mall, the commercial spaces would, I think, benefit from community input, not just weather, but how? How do we get that done? How do we bring more restaurants? How do we make that downtown area, the the vision, which I think people like to see of real walkable, robust, vibrant? Robust, vibrant, mixed use. And you know, maybe mixed, mixed income levels, like a real, a real vibrant community. Um, that would, that would, I think, be useful to get input on.
This is just like general ideas, not just climate oriented, right?
Right, general ideas.
Um, along with that, you know, I've mentioned Kennedy Drive with regard to the darkness. And I think we have a lot of neighborhoods and a lot of streets that are really quite dark. Uh, but that one for one, I think um, there's a lot of people live along there and it's an avenue. Basically, and you know, I dropped Helen off this morning at four o'clock at the airport. It was dark as dark and. Boy, I can't get imagine someone, you know, especially through the winter time wanting to walk there until it gets light, which might be six thirty in the morning. So. You're trying to lighten up, uh, you know, uh, the, the different important. Walkways and that is one in particular. So.
I can report on that specific one Ted, that we were funded this year to do the. Uh, to do a, a analysis, a study of how do we get pedestrian lighting along Kennedy Drive? So that we will be kicked off this year. It doesn't pay for it. It pays for figuring out how to do it, but.
That's great.
But I see the larger question that you're also raising.
Yeah, excellent.
Paul? Well, I have my usual thing about neighborhoods. I want to see us um, um, bring the um, Chamberlain Neighborhood. Planning document from twenty sixteen into the, into the um, uh, camp plan. And I would like to see. Uh, similar efforts being made for all the neighborhoods. And I'd like to see um, lots of public participation in the. In the cap plan. I'd like to see it be a plan that's built up from the grassroots up.
I think one of our. Um, taking the idea that you brought forward about facilitated conversations, I think one of the things that I'm very excited about this is. If we can identify some important talk pits in the community, hopefully it achieves that outcome that you're asking about. Make it worthwhile. Somebody come out to talk about what, what are they passionate about in the future of their community, but give them something to work on because. Saying come out and tell us about the future is really hard to get people out there, but if we can say. You know, here are some things that we would like for to have a hard conversation on. Basically, you know, what, what are the hard conversations that you? That the community that you'd like to invite people to to participate in. I think that's, that's how I might frame some of this.
Except we've got something now that we never had before and that's technology. And um, I think this is a great opportunity to begin to use that to get people involved. I mean, you can participate in meetings. From your home on those snowy evenings in February, you know? And that's going to make, I think, a huge difference. I think if we really tell people how easy it will be for them to participate. I think it will change everything, really. And they're used to it now. They're used to working that way. They're used to. You know, pandemicking that way, you know, so.
I actually, and and it was. In terms of hard conversations, obviously this community's, you know, wrestled over the past few years with. You know, protection of the environment first greenfield development. So that, that has to be an agenda item as we seek feedback going forward.
Great.
You know, I I mentioned in the past. And again, I'm not sure how, how we approach it with the neighborhoods and but um. Dog parks and and parks in general, you know, with five, ten thousand more people, add animals to that. Um, right now, are we, you know, overburdened? Do we have a couple parks, but you know. It'd be even Butler Farms is interesting, the amount of people who walk along and and Oak Creek, they have, you know, big, huge lots which they don't use. But anyway, um, hu- tremendous amount of dogs. But um, I was talking with one of the neighbors. Every time I bike there and I see someone out there, I always just ask, you know. What do you, you know, do you like the neighborhood? Because it's new, you know, in some parts, you know, these people have moved in and I knew that they had moved in. And um, he said, we really love, would love a dog park. And I'm looking, oh, you have all this land in your backyard and so on, but. You know, I think that that bonds neighborhoods when you have a place where they can take their animals. Um, and you know, again, I think, you know, going back to the park part, um, we definitely need. Parks and not just open space for the critters, but um, you know, a place, whether it's ball fields or whether just open space where. People can congregate because, because again, if we go to Williston Road. And you know, there is, there, there is a small park there, not huge. But you know, is there a place where people can maybe grill? They can't grill in their apartment there. But maybe, you know, as in many communities, sometimes they have a little park where there are some grills that people. Sounds crazy to me because I grill my backyard, but I think for some people it'd be really great to be able to walk not too far. And to be able to have a picnic uh, in their community and not have to go to Moncton. So anyway.
Yeah, I mean, I think wha- what that specifically, that last comment Ted to me brings up is we are. Sometime in the next handful of years, going to have the majority of all of the homes in South Burlington be multifamily. We're about, or or, yeah, we're just over, we're just under fifty percent multifamily housing now. So if we think about the majority of our households, if not our residents. Will be living in a circumstance where they may or may not, you know, some of them are townhomes and so they might have a backyard, but the, the. The need and interest in community facilities is evolving substantially in our community. We're not just growing, but we're changing. Uh, fifteen years ago, we were sixty percent single family homes, we're about fifty percent now. So that's a, that's a, that's a big change in just a decade.
Yeah.
So I think that that is a robust conversation about what is it, what is it, what is it, what are the amenities that are needed in our community? For, for our future residents, well, for our, for, to reflect the housing and and users that we have in the future.
Yeah, more urban environment.
Right.
So, and I'd say going along with that, you know, we've been talking about cluster building and clusters, you know, it's more environmentally. Uh, effective. And what learning has there been from those who are living? In a more clustered environment and what can we do in general? You know, it's everything from like composting. I don't know what happened with the state regulation about composting. It kind of. Came and then just disappeared, right? But but it's difficult to, there's bears out of course now and it's difficult to compost. I mean, are there. Should there be ways that a community can have a shared compost area? We've talked before about um, shared. Um, EV being added to neighborhoods. So just what, what in general can we do to make? Cluster living as. As robust as possible besides just the parks.
To me, that, that statement there, I, I think, okay, Feral Street has that. How do we get those people? How do we get in touch with, you know, how, how do we talk to those folks? Because those are the folks we're not going to hear.
Well, I can.
How do we, how do we get, how, how do we hear from those folks? Because they're in that living situation now that you're speaking of. You know, what, what do they see that works and what do they see that doesn't work? You know, this is, if this is a living situation that we're talking about expanding throughout the city, we already have it to some extent there. What? You know, how do we get in touch with those folks to say what, what's working, what's not working?
So I think that there could be some really neat opportunities. If you have some. Concentrated set of questions, ideas, um, similar to how the climate action plan task force did a, did a poll. We don't have connections all the way through the community, but if we're talking about a place like Feral Street or Limekill Road or Corey Hill Road. We do know, uh, we can find the homeowners association for the ownership ones and we can find the landlords for the rental ones. And likely they have distribution lists within them. So if we were to say, we have a ten minute survey on your quality of life. As our, as a sampling of our multifamily residents. Do you have a few minutes to answer some questions? I think you could potentially get a lot of quick answers to Paul's point, you know, technology allows for a lot different ways of. Reaching out to people that they don't have to spend three hours at a meeting. Um, I was very buoyed by the uh, climate action quickie survey, which just had four questions in it and we got, and with. Not too, too much outreach, got a hundred and fifty thoughtful responses. They weren't just yes, no's. They were people giving. You know, what's one thing you could do for climate change? They were sort of that the city could do for climate change. They were open ended, but with a, with a, we're asking you a specific question. So um, I think that that's a rich area if you want to be doing that of how to reach out to a group like that.
Yeah, that, that type of living situation, I, I think that's, e- especially if we're talking about perpetuating that. You know, if, find out what's, what, how it's happening right now.
I spoke to Andrea Leo about that and uh, she said that they regularly work with Paul and Paul is actually a particularly good person for them to work with. So um, that's what we need. We need a huge, you know, public relations uh, campaign outreach to get people more informed. Doing and how to participate and, you know, everybody's got their tablets or their iPads or. Phones and things in all of those apartments everywhere, you know, they can. Literally easily participate if they know how to participate and, you know, have a good reason to participate.
And I, and I think this kind of conversation is very helpful as of your prior ones to help frame what are the. Uh, what, what are the key issues? What are the conversations to invite people to be a part of? Because the, the thing that doesn't work is to say, help us put together our plan and then not have. Yeah, not give anybody any guidance as to how to help.
Yeah, and mo- and motivation to do.
Give me one question in that particular area. I'd love to have the question. Do you feel safe in your neighborhood? You know, and why or why not? And maybe or lighting, maybe I'd like to see some more. Police presence or whatever, because they're, police, it's a very common place that and Limekill are two places where. Police spend a lot of time.
It would be certainly, and I think it would be interesting as part of our comprehensive plan analysis to see, is that a factor of the? Um, are there, are there more police calls there because there's more police calls there or there are more police calls there because is, is it actually? Is it any different per household than anywhere else in the city?
Yeah, there's just.
You know, if there's seven hundred homes there versus twenty somewhere else, presumably there's some level higher, but is it proportionally higher? I think would be an interesting. Question to ask of police and fire and and others uh, to get a sense on that.
Um, and I, I haven't, I've barely said anything. Um, I wanted to just circle back on what, one thing we talked about last meeting. Um, and then I think there was a decision, um, in the last meeting, we talked about maybe assigning neighborhoods to each planning commissioner. Um, but it really does take everybody's, you know, ability to be able to do that. So just so you all know, since that meeting and that discussion. Um, I think it's difficult for all planning commissioners to um, take on that kind of um, responsibility. So um. I was going to pursue setting that up, but I, I'm not because I think that we don't have um, everyone's full. Ability to do that. So just so you know, um, I am not um, taking that any further, but maybe that can be. Read reconsidered or whatever. I just wanted to update you because that was part of our conversation last week.
I just think we can do it a different way, do the same thing, just a different.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just letting you know that as a, because we haven't talked about that.
Okay, other things on this topic. This is very helpful. Um, the next thing that, if you're ready, um, Duncan, the next thing I wanted to just sort of spend a couple of minutes just. Um, highlighting for you, um, because there's a lot in the climate action plan. I strongly encourage you to read it. Um, but if I were to boil it all down and I've sort of stripped away all of the. Um, the sort of the whys and the need for is and sort of jump straight to the measurable objectives piece of it. Um, just for the purpose of this conversation. Um, as Andrew has talked about and Michael's talked about previously, transportation and. Buildings are by far the two most significant contributors to our emissions profile. Uh, the way that the climate action plan task force put their work together was they um. Worked with the RPC that worked with a group called ICLI to uh, develop baseline of emissions in twenty nineteen, the pre pandemic year. Um, and then forecast out if everything is just sort of done the way it is today, based on population growth. Based on standard, uh, you know, growth and vehicle use. Um, and also on the flip side of it, understanding national trends in terms of electrification of cars. And things like that and more efficient heating systems generally, what's it going to look like ten years from now if we just project out? And then if we're going to try to hit the targets identified. In order to meet the, the Paris Accord and the um, this, the council's resolution on climate change. What do we need to do to bend that curve downwards? And the scenario here lays out. A, a, a series of measurable objectives as to what it would take to get to that target for twenty thirty. And so what I wanted to flag was in here, um, on the building side. It means um, the proposal to have um, new homes not be connected to uh, or, or be primarily heated. By carbon free or renewable sources. That's the bottom one. We average about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty homes a year. So that's that one on the bottom. Um, the proposal to, through all sorts of different means and mechanisms. Uh, to weatherize and electrify um, residential and commercial buildings. And those are the top three up there and that's. A whole slew of um, proposed actions from the climate action task force, but I'm just sort of bearing right down to the objective here. And then on the transportation side. Um, strive to have two thirds of all of the vehicles registered in South Burlington be either. Plug in hybrids or electric by twenty thirty. And this one doesn't look like a big number, but it is maybe the, one of the biggest ones in here. A two and a half percent reduction annually in vehicle miles traveled in the community. That means we take all the. Total amount of car miles traveled and we drop it a little bit each year. And the way to achieve that is again, through a whole slew of things, whether it's building the bike ped bridge, whether it's transportation demand management, it's. Bicycle parking that you talked about at the last meeting, it's a whole slew of different tools. Um, the last one is uh, the ICLI model does contemplate that when development. When new development is at a high density, it supports many of these other things. Whether we're talking about um, more efficient buildings, your, it's compact and so therefore. The likelihood that you have a store nearby so somebody can walk to get a gallon of milk instead of driving to get a gallon of milk, it in and of itself can, can support. Um, climate, uh, climate objectives. And then one that's in the category just above here. Um, the ICLI model also looked at what does retaining forest land do? So this one's a little bit of a different beast because it's not about uh, reducing carbon. It's about the fact that forest areas already do capture. Carbon. And so it's estimated that these numbers don't necessarily mean a whole heck of a lot, but the total emissions of the city are. Two hundred thousand units. The carbon sequestration from retaining forests is about eight thousand of those units each year. And so the retention of forests plays a role and you could, you could think about it from if we didn't have those forests. That would be eight thousand more per year that need to be accounted for in other ways. Does that make sense?
I have a question about that.
Is there an incentive?
But my turn, um, of, before you move away from that number, do you know what percent of our forests that those numbers relate to? Are within the newly mapped um, habitat blocks? Throughout the city?
I expect that the majority, the, the significant majority are. I don't know that it does talk about trees and there's a lot of trees in the city that are not that street trees and things like that. Um, but the forested areas, you did capture the bulk of our forested areas in the city, at least ones of. You got all the ones over twenty acres in size.
Okay.
Ted?
No, it's uh, looking at the, the trees, it, does there, did your group discuss about incentivizing people to try to plant trees? Like.
There's various actions about rewilding, planting, recommending tree more and so. There's, there's a, a, a set of actions around trees.
Okay.
Andrew, I, I had a question on the uh, um, the first two under measures. Um. What, what, I'm assuming that's all preexisting. Um, what is? What's the metric, the impetus to get that to happen? I mean, how does that, what, what's the?
Great question. Um, so. I, I'll, I'll tell you my, my, my personal. I I'll tell you my 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 personal perspective on what the measures are. I think there's really two. Key ones and we can, we're really lucky to have the our neighbor city Burlington that's moving forward on these. One is a rental ordinance. Which requires, you know, periodic upgrades of rental space. To be more efficient, um and Burlington provides, you know, um. Pretty significant incentives, carrots and sticks that happens. That's the the two thousand thirty district, I I think what that what that is. And you know, that's that's a big, that's that's a big thing to chew, but I I think that's really important, otherwise. You know, rental space is it's very hard to move. There's a very little incentive for landlords to to do this kind of work unless they're. They have to. And then the other part of it is this the charter that I charter change I alluded to. A little while ago, which Burlington now has asked for charter change to give it the power to regulate. Um, heating systems in existing building stock, commercial and residential. They haven't exercised that power yet. Um, we don't know exactly what that will look like. It could be, say, you know, when your. Natural gas boiler goes out, you have to replace it with a heat pump. Um, it could be something like that, or or it could be something else. It could be a carbon tax. It could be could be some other. Regulatory, you know, uh measure. Um, but I think for us at least, to at least have the power to do something is really important. Otherwise, I think those two goals would be very, very hard to meet.
I'm I'm just thinking of, you know, the homeowner out there looking at their annual budget saying, okay, Johnny's going to school, you know, like. Car needs to be replaced. All right, I've got to weatherize the house, you know.
Well, look, there there's a lot of um incentives for. Um, you know, lower income households to weatherize. I was just speaking with. A developer in does a lot of work in in Burlington and he he told me. The incentives are are so vast that it's practically free to weatherize. Uh, the home of, you know, someone below, you know, hundred twenty percent median income that it's just vast incentives. And I think with the Inflation Reduction Act. Those incentives are even, you know, I think there's a lot of incentives for that. Now, when you get above that level, I I agree, and that's that's the level that people. May struggle. So we we've got to be smart about about how we do this, um and it's not gonna be easy.
Talked to efficiency Vermont this week about. Inflation Reduction Act and um they're expecting that uh. That they'll begin to hear about that uh towards the end of this this year or the beginning of next year, you know. When this federal legislation like that usually takes them a year to write the regulations for the uh for the uh. Uh, for the legislation. So sometime probably, I would say, you know, late winter, early spring. Will start knowing more about what's available, but there's going to be a lot available in terms of. Um, energy efficiency and uh weatherization and all those kinds of things. But nobody quite knows yet. Everybody's waiting to see what it's gonna.
So um just moving kind of beyond that, I I did have a a question and I I um. I just didn't, I came the kind of last minute, Andrew, I I sent it to you in hopes of giving you a chance to. Um, at least be aware of it, but here's my and and I don't. It's an interest. This is an interesting process because I'm really glad that there's this task force that's being very seriously taken uh. Can considered and will um really help us in the comp plan phase. Right? Because we'll just be able to be like, okay, good, do that. And here's how, but um within. The natural areas, uh I did look through the whole plan, including appendix C that has a number of this very specific um. Proposals and within um. That one area, um it pertains to the natural areas, adaptation and resilience. And I'm, I think I made this comment when we first saw. That sheet that Paul had up before, which was a number of meetings ago, yet there was a consultant that came in to help come up with that chart. And the the part that um I'm still see not seeing um how it connects or that's not the right way to say it, but. There's a the first line in the supporting actions for the natural areas is to revise. South Burlington's land development regulations to protect our remaining meadows, forests, grasslands and farmlands from further encroachment as permitted by law. And I know that this was mentioned earlier too, and my comment was where does that? Where does that fit here? I feel like we did so much work during I Z and what is the process here that that um? It's I guess it's really more of a process question. I'm not I'm not asking why it's here. I'm asking. What's the process? For the supporting actions in general within this document. I know there's going to be a presentation to city council. City council is going to say. Are they going to go through each of these supporting actions and say, okay, yes to this, this and this, but this one send over here or yes to the whole thing? And then does that mean that we are to go back and and revise the LDRs to. Basically do something that we talked a lot about during I Z and uh came up with, you know, adding our habitat blocks and doing this and doing that. You know, see what I'm saying? Like, so what is the process? Because this is a very specific statement that was something that we really spent a lot of time on during I Z. If this in the next city council meeting is, you know, approved and like, yep, do it all. I'm just wondering what um how that relates to. To us, it sounds like it would be a required charge and then that's what we would do. Is that, am I reading that right or i- is this? Are will that be pointed out that this is a question that was part of the most recent I Z?
I guess what I would say broadly speaking, um all so so the. Climate Action Plan would become a supporting plan. Just like the city's hazard mitigation plan, ours corridor studies, uh if we did an economic development plan, all of these things. Which will help to inform your comprehensive plan as a city, which is the formal sort of overarching document. And ultimately, everything in the supporting plans, whether it's make this intersection improvement, make these changes to the regulations. Adopt this ordinance, whatever, um are um policy recommendations that require. The that will be considered by. The policymaking bodies in the future about what to priorities, what to prioritize and what to implement. It's it is a roadmap and a guidebook. It the the actual determination to do each of the things in any of these plans. Has to be then carried through as their own policy discussion.
Okay, so I guess I'm just, well, it is, but I guess I'm just for the sake of this body and in that particular question or that particular supporting action point. It seems to me to say, and I am cool with whatever the direction is, okay, let me just say that, okay? But this supporting point seems to say, I know you said at I Z that we weren't going to make grasslands a primary, you know. But a hazard, um but this document is basically saying, find a way to do it. And so the expectation will be that we will do it. You know, this is, I think that we just need some clarity on that because nothing else in this entire document. Had any flags to me at all. I'm like, do it, do it, do it, do it now. When I read this one, the way that it's worded. It just stood out to me as wow, that's very um familiar language. And so I I guess I would just say um. To me, if this document's approved and we are to do this, then then that's what we do. And I think that that's very different than what we ended up. With with I Z and I just want that to be clear to. Um, whomever, there's nothing else. And I I read every single one of the supporting actions and nothing else to me raised any kind of flag like that. I think it's all fantastic. How we're going to get people to replace thirty percent of their lawns with ma- native species? I'd love that. That I think that will be, how do you do that? How do you got a a local resident to do that? I don't know, but I'd love it. But I think that the people that are doing it are. Um, it's beautiful. So I just would, this my comment on that one point.
We did spend a lot of time talking about that.
I'm looking at this pie chart, um looking at forest land, well, let me see, green. Grassland and um what was the other one that I was looking at my glasses? No, it was, yeah, cropland, but especially grassland. And what I'm thinking is, I wonder if it's taking into account. The hill property, which is now being hayed. And then south the Butler Farms, which is Larkens. What forty acre? I forget how many acres that is, but that also is being farmed. It's in corn. And I don't know if that's. I would assume that's the corn and also maybe the hay is possibly the farm land or gra- I'm not sure how it is, but I guess it's. It's not the way it will be in the future. I guess that's.
Yeah, uh this is a um this is a national database of aerial photos that are taken. And take it with somewhat of a gr- grain of salt that it is uh the digital. Uh, analysis um based on those aerial photos of what a snapshot and snapshot in twenty nineteen represented. So fifty six percent of the land appeared to come across as settlement, uh which is housing, commercial, et cetera. Forest is relatively easy to pick out in something like this. Grassland versus cropland is probably a little bit tricky because. Um, you know, a hay meadow probably looks a lot like grassland, whereas maybe a tilled cornfield. Depending on the week that it was taken, might look a little bit different, so. And then wetland is pretty good, but again, you know, wetlands are really only known. Really, when somebody actually physically goes out there. So there are some that a satellite will pick up like that, and there's a lot that don't necessarily, so.
Yeah. I would say most of it, I would say that most of it twenty one percent.
This is not a policy statement. This is a snapshot of what happens to be there that in twenty nineteen.
Yep. I don't know if that's dialed into the climate, you know, if you have grasslands, you have twenty percent, twenty one percent of your land. So that's it suddenly puts the needle into wow, you know, the better. Climate situation than that twenty one percent going to settlement, which is environmentally friendly. So just a point.
Paul, did you, have you gotten what you needed from this discussion?
I think so. I mostly just wanted to flag um the those major sort of measurable objectives and say. Um, as I was just describing to Monica's question, all of these plans can be supporting plans, the comprehensive plans. So as you think about. How do you want to talk about? No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not pick on this subject. I'm gonna pick on transportation and say. You you can look to see and say, as you as you look to, how do you want to establish measurable measurable objectives on a citywide basis? You can um consider using some of these as part of that. As part of the comprehensive plan. So I just wanted to sort of lay that foundation early. Um, and then I think a more thorough presentation um of the Climate Action Plan at a future time would be very useful too alongside. When it's given back to us from the federal consultants, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, and what does that mean? What are the objectives in that case for the city, which is the other half of climate change and? All the other supporting plans in the city. So that's what I had.
I'm not clear on the next step from from my question though, is it, are we, is there a next step or we'll just wait and see?
I think I think I I hear your point. Um, I think that that probably to me, that means that. At some point, when we go back and revisit those LDRs in Article twelve. We would look at that and say, okay, we had the discussion last time, we did not include grasslands. Is it something we look at doing?
I think also this should, as um Andrew pointed out earlier, would be a good discussion to make sure that the comprehensive plan. Says what you wanted to say in the next round. It's it's that is the overarching vision document. This is a supporting plan. And that's certainly guidance, but the comprehensive plan sits on top of all.
And then it it would follow that if that was in the comprehensive plan, we would look at the LDRs to change them to match with the comprehensive.
And again, the comprehensive plan is a aspirational plan. It is not ever the the the. Aspirations set forth in that are then the start of the policy conversations of how you'd implement each one of these things. So, you know. Using a very simp, not so simple, an example of a heating ordinance, for example, the council is considering. That ordinance is not one hundred percent of every single building that is built new has to be one hundred percent. Electric. There are provisions to allow for, you know, uh. A backup heating system and a small portion of a building and a waiver if it can be demonstrated that it's just completely infeasible. That's the implementation of these things from a initial a vision of setting that and that's. That's the that's the challenging and fascinating work that we all get to do.
Um, I hope that in the comprehensive plan, we're a little more critical of the airport. Um, I was disappointed with the Climate Action Plan that it didn't include the airport. And uh it's not that I have great knowledge about the airport. I would like to have more knowledge than I do have. I do know that. They're burning an enormous. Enormous amount, enormous amount of fossil fuel every day. I think they pump um. Twenty five thousand gallons of jet A, which is sort of like kerosene or it's it's not something. It's not something wonderful. It's really kind of awful. And uh about a third of it has um is leaded. So um uh I would like to see us do an analysis of. The um, you know, the environmental impact of of the airport and of the National Guard. Who are not included in that twenty five thousand, they earn probably another fifteen thousand themselves.
Andrew did that. I thought I remember seeing somewhere in the that it wasn't included because it's.
Not under. We spent a lot of time talking about the airport and at the end of the day, thought that um. It wouldn't be appropriate for the plan because South Burlington has no control of the airport. It it's also difficult to really um determine exactly how those emissions. Should be counted if we had control. Is it all emissions, you know, by any plane that starts? In South Burlington lands somewhere else? Like, are those really all of South Burlington's emissions? We couldn't quite get our. Hands around all that and how that should work. And we thought it was just. It was it was too much for the task force to do. Um, also with the knowledge that we understand, the airport itself. Is undertaking a study of its emissions and is coming up with its own climate action plan, which we'll be referencing in our plan. So. Kind of pulling all that together, um we thought the better part of valor was to discuss it, note it and explain why it's not part of our plan.
And the Burlington City Council has put an authority over the.
And we don't.
I I I would just add uh to, I agree with everything Andrew just said and would just add that I think one of the things that the Climate Action. Task Force felt strongly about from the beginning was there are innumerable actions that could be considered in a plan. And the task force wanted to make sure that the actions that are in there are ones that the city of South Burlington can. Advance, whether that's by regulation, by investment, by lobbying the state legislature, but they didn't touch, for example. Vehicle mo- vehicle emission standards. That's so high up at the federal level that. Little South Burlington is not, you know, we can scream as much as we want about federal emission standards from cars. That's not gonna. That's not a good use of our time. So I think in this case, that was a little bit of that consideration too of. In addition to knowing that our partners in in Burlington have a climate action plan and have been aggressively moving forward, that gave some. Comfort to task force members.
Yes, all right. So on to number seven. Are we we're done with that one? Uh, minutes from August twenty third. Do I have a motion to approve?
Oh, so moved August twenty third, two thousand twenty two minutes.
A second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, other business, Paul, is there anything you want to mention there?
Uh, just, there's some amendments um in Colchester, um just giving a heads up to them, but nothing. That I need to draw your attention to specifically.
All right, then I believe we are adjourned.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Good night.
You're welcome. Turn the mic off.